Called to order the common council meeting on February 23rd, 2021 at 7:33. First up is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
Of the United States of America, the republic which is states, the formation under God, the individual-
Roll call, please.
Alder Roda Frada?
You muted.
Yeah. Alder Clouter? Alder Guitard? Here. Alder Crowsey?
Here.
Alder Maldonado?
Here.
Are you gonna hear?
Here.
Mayor Richardson?
Here.
Alder Schroeder?
Here.
Alder Strassman?
Here.
Alder Udell?
Here.
You have a quorum, Mayor.
Alright, thank you. Public appearances, non-agenda items, no appointments, we don't have anything on that. So I'll move right on to consent agenda, if there's a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Sarah, second by Randy. Is there anything that anyone wants to pull out of the consent agenda? Alright, seeing none, then I'll go to a vote. All in favor of approving consent agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay. Alright, that is approved. Administrator's report, Mike.
Thanks, Mayor. There's going to be a Fish Hatchery Road Public Information Meeting for the 2021 reconstruction of Fish Hatchery Road from Traceway Drive south to McKee Road intersection. That's going to be on Thursday, March 4th. The meeting starts at 5:30 if you're interested in learning more about that project and the construction schedule this year. From our rec department, they're inviting you to participate in the Community Fitness Challenge, which runs from March 1st through the 31st. Compete as one team with your city, achieve the most active minutes, and win the title of fittest community. And the rec department says, let's get active Fitchburg. Approximately 40 communities across Wisconsin are hosting the first ever Community Fitness Challenge. They invite all community members to participate in a virtual challenge to promote active lifestyles, connect people to the outdoors by encouraging use of our Parks Trail Systems, and engage Wisconsin communities in a friendly competition. All active minutes count, not just running and walking. Let's get moving, Fitchburg. The winning community will receive a trophy, and all participants receive a tee-shirt. While there's a personal goal of 200 minutes a week to help motivate, and to give you a goal to strive for, there are no requirements and no awards given for personal goals, so that you can customize it based on your own needs. The fee is $10. If you'd like to participate, please contact the Fitchburg Rec Department. Then we've got the second reminder for our Biz Boost Loan Program. Those payments are due at the end of February. We've got a monthly reminder that's going out on that one. And then the Clerks Department and city staff continue to work on the details for the temporary premise expansion permit. We're going to launch that again this year and run it through October 31st of this year. And applications would flow through the Public Safety Committee, just like they did in 2020. So we're going to start to get the word out about that program for folks. And then, lastly, we continue to work with USPS and John Polisello at the Hatchery Hill Postal Contract Station. So we're in conversations. Please continue to patronize the postal contract station there. It will be remaining open beyond March 11th as we work through some of the details there. We just had a Zoom meeting with the postal people last week, and are working out kind of what that business model will be going forward, but it is open and should be remaining open as we work on those details. That's all I have to report.
Alright, any quick questions for Mike? Seeing none, then we can go right to plant commission. I know they're both getting tabled, but go ahead, Tom. They're postponing actually.
The first one is the final plat. It's for FPA 237421, request by Math- Matthew Agent for Fitchburg Land LLC for approval of a final plat for subdivision of lots 40 through 44, an outlet 16 and 17 for Terra Vesta. And I'll move approval with a question.
Actually, if you could move to postpone.
Oh, that's- you answered my question.
There you go.
I was in plant commission, we postponed both of these?
Yep, yeah.
I was wondering what they were on here for.
Yeah, let me get a second on the postpone.
Second.
Seconded by Randy. And so I can speak to these two, and actually there's one under Public Works as well. The developer, the company doing this project, asked us to postpone because there were a few questions that came up on requirements from the state in terms of the utilities that they would need. It's kind of a unique piece of land because it's actually five lots, even though it's one project. And those five lots, because it's in smart code, it has to remain five lots, and that really complicates everything. So they're working through some options and some details to see if they can get those ironed out. And hopefully, and next time it comes back to us, we'll- they'll be okay and have that figured out. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I just got a question, Mayor. Not to criticize, but what's this even doing on the agenda if they're both postponed?
We still have to postpone it because when we refer it out, it's to come back on this. So we still have to postpone here.
Okay, alright. I don't recall that, okay.
Alright.
Next one was-
First, I gotta get a vote. All in favor of postponing, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay? Alright, that is postponed. Go ahead, Tom.
Next one is ordinance, it's 2021-0-02, an ordinance amending Chapter 23, smart code. District to amend Article 6562 relative to building recess for- it was for the outdoor living spaces, move to postpone.
Second. Seconded by Randy. Any other questions on this one? Alright, all in favor of postponing, say aye?
Aye.
And opposed nay? Alright, that is postponed. Anything else for plant commission, Tom?
No, our next meeting is the 3rd Tuesday in March, and it looks like we'll have quite a few things on there.
Yep. Sarah, Public Works.
Yes, for the first one, would you like me to postpone this one? Just that I believe it's related to that same Terra Vesta development, and it- and-
Actually, I believe number six is the one related to that project.
Yeah.
Apologize, okay.
This one, okay.
I'm who, Resolution R 21520, accepting subdivision improvements in phases G in the plat of Terra Vesta?
Second.
Seconded by Gabriella. And did Public Works approve?
We did.
Alright, and what is it?
This is the improvements for the specific phase G in Terra Vesta. Phil had said that a punch list remained that needed to be approved before occupancy would be allowed within the buildings, but that he felt confident that the punch list would be satisfied. And so he said that this would be around 20 units within the Terra Vesta development.
Any questions at all? Alright, seeing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 And opposed nay? Alright, that one's approved. Next?
Alright, I'd like to move Resolution R 921, solid waste budget amendment to allow spending of CDRR deposit funds.
Second.
Seconded by Gabriella. And did Public Works approve?
We did not.
Okay, did RCC approve?
Yes.
And then I believe Finance approved amended, though. They amended it.
Yeah, we amended, yes.
How about Sarah? First, why don't you tell us what it is, and then I'll go to Julia to talk about what they have amended.
Sure, so this has been a project that I know RCC has done a lot of research with, that a fee had been- a deposit had been collected, ranging from $50 to $100 for individuals completing construction projects, mostly contractors. And it wasn't an effort to remove construction debris. And so they have this fund of $26,000 because a lot of the individuals who paid that deposit didn't come back and collect the deposit that they had initially provided. So I know RCC had suggested that they spend the fund and mail out the recycling guide, which hadn't been mailed in a physical copy for six years. And so that was their proposal of how these funds could be spent in an effort to reduce construction debris. Works unfortunately did not approve the proposal. They didn't feel as though it would be a good use of the resources just because the success of the mailing could not be measured, and that if we did send out the paper copy, we would have no idea as to what the effect was for reducing construction debris. It also seemed a little counterintuitive from a recycling program of sending out paper goods when we're trying to send a message of reducing. And so with the guide being available online, and having- residents having the option to not have to use paper materials, it felt like it just didn't seem to fit the message. And lastly, there was just a question as to whether or not it was actually hitting the goal of decreasing construction materials, since the recycling guide is based a lot towards residential goods.
Alright, Julia, do you want to speak to the finance discussion and the amendment?
Yes, yes. So we discuss- we agree with some of the comment that Sarah made about using the money to send to, you know, the paper guide, because, you know, we are trying to be paperless. We're trying to save trees, and you know, this one is, you know, we go against being a recycle initiative. So, but we want to- but we want to keep those funds restricted for future use, so we can use it for determining the future, what are the other option initiatives, or other ideas that we can use these funds. You know, it could be for educational purpose about recycling. It could be for, I think, the second, what is it? Additional peleteri, pickups. So we decided that we need to move forward with, you know, the resolution. And I wanna- I wanna tell you what are the part that we stroke out, and we are gonna- the part that we're gonna keep, okay? So if you look at the resolution, the last paragraph where it said, "Be to further resolve", we are gonna keep by the Fitch for Common Council that it amends the 2021 refuse on recycling budget to reflect a forbated deposit as revenue to be spent, and then we are gonna strike out the rest, and then I'm gonna continue to be spent on CDRR-related program and determined by council at a future date. So those funds, we are gonna keep it restricted for future uses.
Okay.
And the council is gonna determine which one are gonna be.
Alright.
So we are, you know, okay.
Gabriella, do you want to speak to RCC's discussion, and I can go back to Sarah after that?
Yep, yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, so RCC's been discussing this, I think, for quite a while because it's a challenging- It's challenging to find a way to use that money that meets the requirement, just because it is so specific. So there has been several, you know, bits of discussion, and obviously what the initial proposals lay out here. I will just say that, you know, just as a couple of, you know, I definitely sympathize with the, you know, the concept of mailing something out physically that would- might end up in the recycling bin. I can understand why some people would oppose that. I will say that it- I do think it's still worth considering, although it sounds like we need to have more conversation about it. The reason why is the recycling guide, it includes a lot more information than just what's intuitively you put into your recycling bins. But at the same time, we have a pretty good understanding that people- well, we have a good sense that people don't necessarily understand what is appropriate to put in the recycling bin because about 18 to 19% of items that are in the recycling bins in Fitchburg end up in the landfill because they're inappropriately recycled. And anything above 10% actually incurs an additional fee from Pelletary because they, you know, assume that there's a certain amount that can't be recycled. But we're over that threshold, so it actually produces kind of an additional cost for Fitchburg citizens. So there is a potential way to measure the impact of a guide going out. But it sounds like we need to have more discussion on it, and I definitely want to revisit the Public Works discussion that they had recently. So I guess I was part of the Finance Committee discussion. I definitely think that we should pass something today to clarify that the amount- the funds should be determined what to use it for. But I guess what- my question for the council is I'd be interested if anyone has any suggestions. Bill- Bill Walkie mentioned something in Finance that potentially we could do like a bulk pickup from Pelletary, which is an option in our contract. We could use the money to pay for that and have people drop off things that are CDRR-related. And maybe there are other ideas that might come up, but I do think that if we pass something today with the stipulation that we'll have to figure out later, I do think RCC will probably pick this up for conversation either at the next meeting or the following meeting.
Sarah, and then Dorothy after that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just had a clarification question. So I understand that it would come to council for approval as to how the funds would be spent. Can I assume that it would also go through RCC and Works just because they have been involved in these conversations, or would it just go to council?
Julia, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, it's gonna go, for sure, it's gonna go to, you know, to RCC and if also it's something related to public works, you know. It gonna- it had to go to refer to commission, for sure.
Okay, I just was curious from there, the-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Dorothy, go ahead.
I was listening to this in Public Works, and what I was thinking about is that I've got an old busted down bookcase, and I don't know what I'm supposed to do with it. It's one of these just cheap- And I don't know how I'm supposed to dispose of it, so I would love a little bit more. I think our very best tool for informing citizens that we could use this money for is taking out additional ads in Fitchburg Star. That goes to every household, so owners would get it, renters would get it. There should be discussion about the fact that most apartment units don't have a recycling program. This would be a drop in the bucket for the needs for setting up a recycling program for apartments, but it would be something that might be a little bit of a start anyway. So those would be my thoughts on it.
Is Misty on the call, Scott?
Yes, she is.
Misty, I guess I just have a question for you. With the changes to the resolution, is there really any difference between voting no versus voting yes at this point? Because we're just kind of saying, well, we're gonna do something with the money, but we still don't know what it is. It seems like there's not much of a difference, or are we better off referring it back to RCC and Public Works for other ideas?
Yeah, it is one difference. So this resolution is still declaring that those fees are abandoned and forfeited, so we can show it as a revenue in 2021, and I think we should take that step, just to kind of clear those off the books. And then, yes, figure out the expense part later.
Okay, great. And I believe this has to be two-thirds, which- because it's a budget amendment as well, so it's exciting.
Correct, yep.
Alright, so there is value to passing this, even though it doesn't say what we're using it for, there's value. Good. Any other questions? Alright, seeing none. I'm gonna try a voice vote. If it's not unanimous, then we'll go to a roll call, but- Oh, actually, first of all, sorry, we didn't actually amend the resolution. So Julia, if you'd like to officially amend the resolution, that'd be great. Whoop, you got me, though.
I move approval of the resolution as amended.
Well, so it's already been moved, so I think you just want to move to amend the resolution.
Okay, I move to amend the resolution, yes.
Alright, and that was striking the approving-
Yeah, it's striking the, you know, approves, adding the $14,000 and the, you know, $12,000 on that section.
Alright.
And to add, and to add, you know, and determined by council at a future date. So I think Tracy has the comment, the notes.
Yep, alright. Is there a second to that? Seconded by Randy. Alright, any further questions on the- So now we're just voting to amend it. We're not voting on the full resolution. So all in favor of amending the resolution to strike that language, and then to add in to be determined by the council at a later date, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, that is passed. So now we need to vote on the amended item, I suppose. I don't think there's any other questions. So all in favor of approving as amended, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay? Alright, then that passes. Great. Alright, next one, Sarah.
I move Resolution R 3621 to release existing stormwater and drainage easement on Outlot 1 of CSM 3060.
Seconded by Randy. And did Public Works approve?
Yes.
And I know Plant Commission also approved. Alright, what's this one about?
The way Bill explained this one, it was just basically this outlot easement was recorded incorrectly, and that when they went out and actually measured it, it was 40 feet to the north, so that they just were doing some cleanup within this, the plating.
Any questions on this one? Yeah, Julia.
Where is this outlot?
Yeah, I have a picture of it. It's for Lacy Road and Fahy Glen. It's within that area. So the 5335, but within that area, Lacy, Fahy, and Ballyduff.
Ran that roundabout.
Yeah. Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, seeing none, and all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 And opposed nay? Alright, that's approved. Number four.
Move Resolution R 3721, authorizing the release of option to repurchase between the city of Fitchburg and Subzero.
Second.
Seconded by Gabriella. And did Public Works approve?
Yes.
And I know Plant Commission approved. Did Finance approve?
Yes.
Alright, and what's this one, Sarah?
This was back in 2000. There was an agreement entered in that there would be the possibility of purchasing this land. Bill said that there wasn't a record of what they'd ever planned to do, if they would actually pursue purchasing this land, and they just don't plan on moving forward this, so they just would like to execute the release of this option.
And I know that when McKee Road was redone, they wanted to make sure they had any land that they might need for McKee Road, and that's redone now and finished, so we don't need any more land for that. Yeah, Dorothy?
So is this the land that would be immediately across McKee Road from Spoke?
Yep.
Okay.
That area there, kind of close to the movie theater.
I've heard of interest in that parcel.
Okay. Other questions at all? Alright, seeing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 And opposed nay? Alright, that's approved. Next one?
Move Resolution R 4421, the 2021 annual purchase of bulk fuel.
Seconded by Randy. Did Public Works approve?
Yes.
Did Finance approve? Alright, and what's this one, Sarah?
This is part of the purchasing policy that it exceeds the $25,000. It's the standard annual purchase order that comes through for the bulk fuel purchase.
Alright, any questions? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And opposed nay? Alright, that one's approved. And then, yeah, this one, if you want to postpone this one, Sarah?
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you. So like to postpone Resolution R 4821, releasing a public easement on Outlot 16 in Terra Vesta.
Sarah, second. Seconded by Tom. And yeah, this is related to that project that we postponed the other two items on, and so hopefully they come back in a month, and we can do this, so. Any questions or comments? All in favor of postponing, say aye?
Aye.
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 And opposed nay? Alright, that is postponed. Anything else for Public Works, Sarah?
No.
Alright, what about Parks?
We haven't met recently. We meet on April 1st, and it should be a good meeting. We'll be discussing the pickleball that got referred, and we've been receiving several emails of support for that project. And like Mike had mentioned, the rec regional program that was recently promoted is something that's pretty exciting that the rec area is putting on. That's it.
Alright, thank you. Library Board, Randy?
Yes, the Library Board met last week, Wednesday, the 17th. A number of things were discussed. One of the items is that the 3,000 digital magazines- 3,000 digital magazines have been added to the Overdrive. And they are available for immediate checkout through the Overdrive website, or library, the Libby app, I should say. Next item, the library staff is participating in diversity, equity, and inclusion training provided by the Ripple Project. This is available to all Dane County libraries, and it's being facilitated by the August Ball from Cream City Conservation. And the staff will participate in 12 hours of training over the next several months. Third item, the library is designing a story walk from McKee Farms Park, which will be installed on the walking path. Kevin Richmond has built a prototype, and he will share it with Parks, the Park Staff, and the Park Commission. We hope to have all 18 units, or displays, I should say, installed this spring, and the project is funded by the Friends of the Fitchburg Library. That's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Commissioner Agent Mall, Dorothy?
Thank you. We met on the 11th. We had a presentation from the social workers, Amy and Sarah. They gave us an overview of case management program and an update on the clients currently being served. Then we passed a resolution adopting a master service agreement with Language Line Services to be able to do telephone translations with people in need. And then from Senior Center Friends, they are planning a Pancake Breakfast fundraiser at Hy-Vee in April, so people can look forward to that. Jill talked about a new independent assisted living. The whole building will be 125 units, assisted living of 60 units for older adults being proposed near Terra Vesta, and they hope to reopen to the public in April.
Alright, thank you. RCC, Gabriella?
Yeah, just wanted to make one call out, so one more plug for the Fitchburg Recycling Guide. The new 2021 guide is up on the website. If you Google Fitchburg Recycling Guide, the PDF is the second hit. The first hit takes you to the actual refuse and recycling section of the Fitchburg website, so it's pretty easy to locate. And our next meeting is going to be on Monday, March 8th at 6:30 PM.
Alright, what about TTC?
We met last on February 11th, and we actually had a long discussion about an ordinance change that will be forthcoming in the near future to council about changing some of the rules around alternate side parking. Alternate side park- parking is something that we have in force all year round, but there are actually some areas of the city that it's really unnecessary to enforce it outside of winter, you know, when plowing needs to happen. And all that happens is we end up ticketing cars that are just trying to park on busy streets that have lots of apartments. So we're actually looking about updating the ordinance so that we remove the alternate side parking requirement during the warmer months, and make sure we have it in place in the winter months for when we need to do snow plowing on a regular basis. And obviously, emergency snow- emergency snow situations are obviously a separate thing, but related to the ordinance as well. So we had a discussion about that, asked some questions to our senior transportation engineer, Andrew, for consideration, and he's gonna be working on that and bringing it back to council in the near future. And we also had an update about our public transit discussion. We are gonna have a couple of public meetings. We're tentatively- well, it looks like we're probably gonna do the first one in conjunction with the next Transportation and Transit Committee meeting, which is coming up pretty soon, March 11th at 6:30 PM. And March 11th is a Thursday. Yeah, so that's coming up pretty shortly, and that is also when our next meeting is.
Alright, excellent, thank you. Seda, Julia?
Yeah, so we are not meeting this month, but I have some updates. The first is- The first is the staff is working to bring back the temporary premise expansion program for two thousand twenty-one, the one for restaurant. And the ending date for this year will be October thirty-first. Also, the staff have met virtually with Edgewood College official and the O'Brien to discuss the preliminary regional stormwater study that we are gonna have a report tomorrow night in the committee of the whole. Also, the engagement letter to begin the affordable housing endowment pilot program study with H and A advisors has been approved. And staff will be meeting with H and A advisor the first week of March to discuss the process and the parameters. And the other thing that I want to tell you is the four-quarter hotel room tax collection were thirty-two thousand dollar compared to one hundred twenty-three thousand dollar from the last year quarter. So this one has been a very, you know, a huge effect in the Fitchburg Chamber of Commerce, you know, and Seda budget too. So that's it. Our next meeting is going to be March twenty-fifth.
All right, Ag and Rural Affairs, Randy?
Yes, Ag and Rural Affairs met last week, Tuesday, February sixteenth. A good portion of the meeting was to discuss the possibility of taking broadband, extending broadband into the rural area. Jeremy Crosby, Director of FCTV, gave an excellent presentation. And on exactly what that would entail, he didn't discuss the grant application process. That's something totally different. And we're working with Mike Zimmerman and his group going forward. But Jeremy did explain, based on information he had from Public Service Commission, maybe also the FFC and Federal Communications Commission, I should say, the FCC, and the exact boundaries within Fitchburg as to where the telecoms reside. Now, from my own experience, I had some questions as to where those boundaries exist, and some of the other commission members shared their frustration that they could not receive broadband in the rural area, so. And then, last few minutes of the meeting, we discussed language regarding rural events and venues within the rural section of Fitchburg. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. EMS, Shannon. Shannon, you're in. There you go.
Nothing to report.
All right.
I have to get my charger for my computer. It's about to die.
All right. Bicycle Committee, Jill.
Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so if you have dates, none related directly to the committee. One Bike Fitchburg is seeking board members. So if you are interested, please get in contact with them through their website. The, there is a scholarship from Trek Bicycles. It is called the Trek Pathfinder Scholarship, and it's for young people from low-income communities. And winners, awardees will receive a Trek Marlin mountain bike, helmet, shoes, accessories, and a kit, as well as a stipend for the NICA League, and entry fees for a full season of racing events. So if you have or work with young people, please spread the word. It's on Trek's bicycle website. And then there is a, the next bike committee meeting is going to be April sixth at seven-thirty A M.
All right, thank you. Trade Advisory Committee, Gabriella.
Our next meeting will be on Thursday, March eleventh at four P M, and we will be discussing the tree protection ordinance.
All right. Landmarks Preservation, Shannon? Oh, sorry. Shannon, landmarks preservation? I think we're freezing up here in chambers a little bit, too.
Okay, nothing to report.
All right, great. Housing Advisory, Dorothy?
Thank you. Don't have anything real committee-related, but I do want to thank Joyce, particularly for making sure the committee stays aware of activities in the area related to housing. She has made sure that we know about the Dane County Housing Initiative, has had a series of webinars that we've all been invited to. She also recently sent Madison Area Builders Association comparison chart of single-family and duplex permits issued for nineteen and twenty. And that would be available if anybody's interested in getting a copy of that.
All right, thank you. What about healthy neighborhoods?
And we are, I haven't heard how many grant requests we received. It closed yesterday, and I haven't gotten an update. Have you, Erin?
I have not heard anything either. Mike, have you heard anything? Nope, Mike hasn't either. Not sure.
Okay. We are looking forward to meeting on March tenth, in any case, to at least start going over those. So if anybody is interested in sitting in on that meeting, tune in.
All right, thank you. Finance, Julia.
Okay, in the Finance Committee, we approved the bill, the detailed review of all check issue, check number one-two-one-seven-seven-seven dash one-two-one-eight-four-eight, dated February first, February fifteenth, totaling four million five hundred forty thousand dollar, three hundred thirty-three ninety-three cents. And then I move approval of resolution R dash twenty-six, twenty-six dash twenty-one, authorizing hotel room tax payment to the Fitchburg Chamber of Business Bureau for tourist contract.
Is there a second? Signed by Randy. And what's this about, Julia?
So this is our annual preapproval for the Chamber, Fitchburg Chamber of Commerce, for the collecting the the preapproval that we are proving the budget for a hundred seventy-five thousand dollar for this year. So, so we, and, you know, we don't know what is going to happen this year with the hotel room tax collection. It depends on COVID, but so far, we preapproved one hundred seventy-five thousand dollar, and this is the approval of this contract.
All right. Any questions, Dorothy?
In short, if I'm correct, the Chamber gets seventy percent of room tax collected, and the city keeps thirty percent.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. So regardless of how high or low that number is, that's the breakdown.
Yep. Fortunately, it's low right now.
Yep.
All right, any other questions? Seen none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, that's approved. Next one, Julia.
Next, I move approval of resolution R dash forty-three dash twenty-one is WEX's annual fuel purchase.
Second.
Signed by Gabriella. I don't know. All right. And what's this one about?
Another preapproval, annual preapproval for the purchase of the fuel using the car, the WEX car. You should, currently, the fire and police department are, you know, are using this car. It's around ninety-five thousand dollar budget for the year.
All right. I believe these are people who are buying fuel with a card, a credit card.
The car, yes.
At the public pump.
All right. Any questions? Yeah, go ahead, Gabriella.
If Misty's still on, I have a question. I'm not sure if you can answer it, but if you do know the answer, help your head. I'm curious. Are there other departments that could be using the WEX card that were like looking at adding it, given the convenience of it and and the fact that they refund the gas tax automatically? Is that something that we're looking into?
Go ahead, Misty.
So most of the city vehicles have a WEX card. So I would say most of the departments use that as their primary source of fueling up, and the city pumps are kind of secondary. The exception being the staff that work out of the maintenance facility, they do it in reverse. So they fill up at the pumps first, choice, and then if they're not available for whatever reason, then they would use the WEX card as backup.
Awesome. Thanks.
All right. Seen no other questions? And all in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, that one's approved. Next one.
I move approval of resolution R dash forty-five dash twenty-one, adopting the twenty-twenty-two dash twenty thirty-first capital improvement plan is scheduled.
Is there a second?
Second.
Signed by Randy. And what's this one, Julia?
This is the, we do it every year. We approve the schedule for the CIP plan. So if you look at the schedule page in your document, in your package, at the bottom, there are a couple of things that we are going to do different this year, and one of them is that we are going to split out the public works from all the other departments, since public work is usually the biggest, you know, package that we review. And then we are aligning the property owner notification letter with the post of the proposed CIP to the website. And the third one is we are gonna bring our move, one, the, we are gonna move the adoption of the the plan to the second meeting in July instead of the first meeting in August. So Misty can, it is more better for Misty when she's working with the, for the, preparing for the operational budget.
All right. Any questions at all? Seems like we just finished the budget, and we're already thinking about next one.
Yeah.
All right. Seen nothing. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, that's approved. One more.
I move approval of resolution R dash forty-six dash twenty-one, adopting the master service agreement with Language Line Services, Inc.
Second.
Signed by Sarah. And what's this one?
So this one is the senior center would like to provide interpretation services to non-English speaking client, and they need, you know, to contract with some providers, so they choose this one.
All right, and I know that all city departments can use this service if they would like, if they have that need. All right.
Has the police department used to use it in the past, this provider, so?
And I think Fire Department is talking about using it as needed. So, and I'm sure other departments will, if needed as well. Dorothy, go ahead.
That's also the same resolution that Commission on Aging Well approved.
Oh, good.
Okay, yeah.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Seen none. All in favor, say aye.
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 And opposed nay? All right, that's approved. Anything else, Julia?
Uh, no.
All right. Personnel, Dorothy.
I don't think I have anything.
All right. What about Public Safety, Sarah?
We did not have a meeting tonight. Hopefully, we'll meet in two weeks, so nothing to report.
All right, then we'll go to Mayor's Report. Not a whole lot. I know that there's a lot of people skating on the ice rink at McKee Park in the last weekend. I think they said over fifty people were there, and so that will continue to be open unless we get too many forty-five degree days in a row. But that's not all bad either, if we get that. But they did have the warming house open for a little while as well, so people ice skating or just walking through the park could use that if they needed. So keep using that. And then I just wanted to give a quick update on the city administrator position. We've got, I believe, six people who have applied so far, but we expect more to come. And Sarah said the highest quality applicants usually come in closer to the deadline of, I believe it's March twelfth, or March fifteenth, sorry, Monday, March fifteenth. And then, otherwise, I'm talking to Sarah about, you know, phone interviews and questions. I know she's promoted in a lot of different places, so really done a great job of getting the word out, both locally and nationally as well. So she'll give us a more in-depth update in two weeks, but I just want to let you know that that's out there, and we've actually had other people call us as well and just asking us questions. So it's out there, people are seeing it, and so I am hopeful that we get some great candidates. Other than that, I can go to all the reports. I think we're starting with District Four this week. Tom, do you want to go first?
Actually, I just have one comment that had to do with a phone call I received from a lady who wanted to make sure the city, in the future, recognizes the high school kids when something happens, like somebody gets a swimming award, basketball award, hockey award, et cetera. And I just assured her that we'll try to keep our eye on it, and it's something, keep in mind, we have all these, what, four school districts, whatever the number is. And, but I think it's good, not only for the community, but for our residents, to recognize those kids that did achieve something through their athletics. So just food for thought for the future.
All right, thank you. Randy?
Yes, last week, there was an informational meeting regarding Lacy Road, the extension from Fitchrhona to Seminole Highway. That was last Wednesday, the seventeenth. A number of items were discussed. Some of those items were regarding the on-street bike lanes and buffers, median strip, sidewalks, curb and gutter, storm sewer, storm water, reducing storm water that was generated, minimizing some of the other environmental impacts, such as the removal of mature hardwood trees, or not to remove them. And then a big issue is the project cost as well. In addition to that stretch of Lacy Road, there was discussion regarding the intersection of Seminole Highway and Lacy, and future plans. That is in District Four, and that's the district that Tom Clotter and I represent. And then there's also another public information meeting Thursday evening, the twenty-fifth, at six-thirty. And that is regarding Sine Road from McCoy Road to Aurora Avenue, and online attendance is encouraged. And similar items of discussion, I'm sure, will come from that meeting, just as Lacy Road, so stay tuned. That's all I have.
All right, skipping, oh, Tom, another one. Yeah, go ahead.
No. Actually, I just have a question on that first one that Randy talked about. Will there be another public meeting in reference to the public weighing in on this? And that would be the, I call it, Seminole Highway to Fitchrhona. Would there be another meeting on this for the public? Or is there anything else scheduled? Do we know?
I don't think anything else is scheduled. I think there's another one that we're gonna have. Mike, do you know for sure?
I don't know what's going to be scheduled yet, but we're gonna do a follow-up. As a staff, I just talked to the mayor earlier this evening, and I'm gonna convene Public Works Planning and Finance, because I know that there were a number of questions that came in from some of the neighborhood leaders. And so we're gonna convene a group of city staff to put the responses together to those questions, and then post that out publicly on the project website. And I know, and one of their questions was a request for some additional meetings.
And I know that we will, as a council, really make the final decision on if the intersection of Seminole and Lacy will be a stoplight or roundabout. And so look for that in the future. I'm not sure when that's going to be either, but we've got, they gave some good information, and there's some feedback on that, but we'll get that information as well as the council going forward. Randy?
Just one additional comment on it. My comments have been put together, have been listed from a number of those that attended the meeting last week and have been presented or will be presented to From a number of those that attended the meeting last week and have been presented or will be presented to Public Works. And I think, Mike, you 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 alluded to those questions. So there is a, there is a group of of concerned citizens and they're expressing or relaying their concerns. That they have regarding that project.
All right, going to District One, Dorothy.
I am so glad to be able to say that District One has handed off major road construction to other districts. Yay. The only thing we've got road construction wise is question on Phil site on Thermo Fisher. For things left over from the Fish Hatchery Road project. So we've got the Pine Ridge Neighborhood asking some questions about that again. So, other than that, mostly another thanks to Jack for kind of staying on top of complaints. About people leaving piles of stuff out in front of their house. So it's much appreciated to be able to have him around to say, hey, go talk to the landlord.
Great. Joe?
Sure. I, well, this is happening right now during our meeting. But there is a discussion on COVID nineteen in the black community. I only mention it in our district boards because it's being led by one of our residents, Dr. Jasmine Zapata. So if you are so inclined, feel free to check it out. It's hosted by the National Council of Urban League Guilds and includes, you know, four different folks in the medical field. So that is happening today.
All right, thank you. Julia?
Oh, I don't have anything particular about my district, but I want to continue the comment that Tom mentioned. About we need to recognize people and I want to recognize. Someone that won the spelling bee for the second year in a row. Maya Haddad, and she lived in Fitchburg. She attend Eagle School. She's a sixth grader, so congratulations Maya for achieving the spelling bee again for the second year in a row. So, so it's, you know, so, and also attending another Fitchburg school. So, you know, so that's it. I don't have anything about my district.
I know we've reached out to her parents in the past when she's won the spelling bees and they weren't interested in coming in, unfortunately. So we'd have reached out to her in the past, so it's not just athletics too, Tom, it's spelling bees as well. Gabriella?
Yes, thank you. So since this is the last meeting during Black History Month, I just wanted to acknowledge that. You know, one of the important aspects of observing Black History Month for me, and I think for a lot of people, is a process of educating myself. And finding new resources to educate myself about Black history, about the Black Black experience in America. It's something that I I try to do all year, but I always try to, you know, rededicate myself to that at the beginning of Black History Month. And I've been actually really lucky that I actually started on February, in early February, a course with a whole bunch of Fitchburg City staff. Called Black History for a New Day. It's, of course, put on by a local group of UW Madison professors. And also Reverend Dr. Alex G., who is a District Two resident, actually, and a prominent member of of the area. And it has been pretty extraordinary. The the goal of the course really is to mobilize white people to dismantle racist systems. And you do that through, you know, understanding how the African-American experiences shape the world we live in. How allies can find roles to support racial justice today. And really rooting ourselves in history, understanding to how we got to where we are today, which is really the context that we need in order to move forward. And I think me, myself and a lot of people, we have nine weeks of the course for three weeks and now. It's amazing the types of things that we aren't taught in school about Black history. And it's, it's actually kind of shocking sometimes, the things that you learn. And you just, it's kind of hard to believe that this wasn't part of our education. There is so much that's missing from our education system that is an important context for our world today and understanding what's happening. So I encourage you to seek out opportunities like this. I know not everyone has the opportunity to do a course like that. But there are so many resources out there, articles that you can read, even like self-guided courses that you can take. If you are interested in the Black History for a New Day course, there's a great article from Madison Three Sixty-five on it. And I'm sure that they that you can find more information about it and potentially find a way that you can get into the course in the future. Black Like Me is a podcast that Dr. Alex G. runs, which I think is great. I listen to it regularly. And there's some other podcasts, a couple that I've listened to are Sixteen Nineteen and Code Switch is something I listen to regularly. And then United Way of Wisconsin actually started a twenty-one week equity challenge back in February first. And you can look at some of the old resources, but you basically sign up and they send you resources every week to take a look at. So anyway, I encourage everyone to, I know that that's a lot of resources, but I encourage you to take one step. Listen to one podcast episode, read one article, reach out to learn one thing before the end of Black History Month. And think about how you can incorporate that into your life throughout the year. And it's been a real pleasure so far and I look forward to to finishing that, add that course with some of that Fitchburg City staff that I'm in it with. Thanks.
All right. Sarah?
Just two quick things, reiterating what Randy had said about the Sine Road reconstruction. That I know that there has been a lot of interest in that within the Swan Creek area especially for McCoy to Aurora. So thank you for bringing that up and just a reminder, February twenty-fifth, six-thirty to eight-thirty. And then also there is a neighborhood meeting for potential development west of the crossings. If anyone, the neighborhoods have been reached out to by the developer, but if you do have any questions about that, please feel free to reach out. Not much information to share at this point, but can definitely share what I what I can. So that's all I have.
All right, and Shannon?
Uh, nothing to report.
All right. Moving on then, there's no unfinished business. Got two direct referrals. First one, it looks like it's a Public Works one. Sarah, do you want to do this?
Sure. I move resolution R fifty-one twenty-one, quit claim deed, releasing former rights away along the former Verona Frontage Road.
Standing by Randy. And did Public Works approve?
Yes.
And I know Plan Commission approved. Who wants to do this more about, Sarah?
So this was for the Circle area, that there's this. The interchange, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the map I have and I don't know if it's very clear. It's the right of way along the former Verona Frontage Road. And that it was just that they didn't really plan to move forward with that. But to be honest, I don't very have very good notes, but I don't know if you have better ones, Erin, I apologize.
Yeah, it's cleaning up from the reconstruction of Verona Road. There was obviously a lot of frontage roads and things redone. And so there's a couple of small remnants that they don't need anymore for the public, for the infrastructure. And so those, the, those kind of claims that they have on those, they're releasing to, I believe it's to Circle. Right, Mike? Yep, Circle. And so it's kind of just clean, again, kind of cleaning up like some of these other things now that all the construction is done. There's not a need for the public to have those lands and so they're releasing the, kind of the hold that they had on those back to Circle.
Yeah, Dorothy?
The the biggest piece in that was the curve of Spoken Sprocket. There was a big, big chunk of land that had been part of. The old roadway that we were giving back when the new roadway was designed.
Anything else? All right, seeing nothing else. All in favor, say aye. And opposed nay. All right, that's approved. And next, Gabriella, this is yours, I believe. Why don't you go ahead and do this one?
I move approval of resolution R fifty-four twenty-one, amending the twenty-twenty general fund and capital projects fund budgets. Transfer twenty-twenty gasoline savings to hybrid and electric vehicle capital project. And this is a direct referral.
Second.
Standing by Sarah. And did finance approve?
Yes.
It did, all right. And do you want to speak to this, Gabriella? And then I'll read some comments we've gotten from the public after that.
That's great. So this is something we've come before you a couple of times, but this is kind of the first, the culmination of it, at least in the first iteration, in my mind. So the, this is the, we're first discussed in the CIP process last year where we added this as a capital project. And then during the budget season, if you recall, we actually, I put this forward as a, as kind of a symbolic resolution to say that we would plan to do this in the future. Transfer gasoline savings that existed at the end of the year into the fund the following year. And I did promise at that point that I would hope to bring it forward this year if there was gasoline savings available. And I'm happy to report that there is, which is why you're saying this today. And to remind you about the capital project, so the idea behind this fund is to provide additional funding for hybrid electric vehicles purchases. Because those capital purchases tend to be a little bit more expensive than a gas-powered equivalent. This fund will be something that a department had could dip into to make up that difference so that they could purchase a hybrid vehicle if it works for the department. And can give them more flexibility. And in my mind, this is an important step. This is an important fund to have available as we move towards purchasing our police fleet, because we've been leasing in the past. And now that we're making those decisions of purchase vehicles over the next ten years, I think we need to be ready to spend a little bit more upfront. And this will make that easier. In terms of, you know, where this money is coming from, there were more than twenty thousand dollars in gasoline savings over the course of twenty twenty. We all know that gasoline prices were fairly cheap throughout twenty twenty. And we also met the three criteria that our finance director put in place as part of the policy. So the three criteria that we met were the actual amount spent on gasoline was less than the budget. The transfer does not cause the departments to show an overall deficit. And the departments that this gasoline savings comes from are the police and fire departments. And the transfer does not cause the city to show an overall deficit. So we hit all three of those criteria. And in my mind, this really is an opportunity for us to pay it forward, pay our gasoline savings forward to a future year. Invest in those hybrid vehicles because eventually gasoline will prices will rise and we're gonna want to have a more efficient fleet. And also this helps us reach our lower emissions and climate change goals, which, you know, Fitchburg's made a statement on that being an important aspect of it. So thanks for the intro. I think Erin is gonna read some of the resident feedback.
Yeah, we got a handful of comments in. Tony Hartman, who lives here in Fitchburg. I'm pleased that the council supported this very smart budget item going into twenty twenty-one. I strongly encourage you to continue your support and approve this item this evening. You all know why hybrids make sense, especially for police squad cars. And with the move toward electrification of all vehicles, EV, I'm sure you will continue to support the health of Fitchburg citizens. Through actions related to cleaner air, water, and specifically energy generation. Congratulations to you, the staff, and FPD for pursuing this in a collegial and cooperative manner. Also, Will Bussi from Fitchburg. I am writing to express my support for resolution R fifty-four twenty-one, which would transfer gasoline savings to fund the hybrid and electric vehicle capital project. One of the things I love about this city is our commitment to sustainability and doing our part to address the complex problems posed by climate change. Vehicles owned by the city represent the city and our values. Reducing the carbon footprint of the vehicles owned by the city is a small but meaningful way to reflect those values to the community. Additionally, hybrid and electric vehicles offer financial benefits by requiring less taxpayer money to be spent on gasoline. Thank you for your consideration and for your ongoing service to our city. Next is Paul Feber from Fitchburg. I am writing to urge your enthusiastic support for R fifty-four twenty-one, which amends the twenty-twenty general fund and capital projects fund budget. To transfer funding enabling the city to make hybrid or electric vehicle purchases that may have a higher upfront cost. With GMC's recent and aggressive commitment to build nothing but electric vehicles by twenty thirty-five. The path toward this crucial alternative is clearly within sight and wide open. The city of Fitchburg should eagerly join a growing number of US municipalities, making a serious effort by replacing fossil fuel fleets with hybrid or electric power. While the initial cost at this time may be slightly higher, costs will continue downward as use grows. Further, it is already clear that the rewards can be enormous. Not only will we gain better health with cleaner air, but we'll actually realize lower maintenance costs as we move toward greater use of electric vehicles throughout Dane County. Also important, our children, grandchildren, and future generations will not ask what were they thinking? But rather that we realize the earth is warming, that it was us, that it was real and bad, but they found ways to fix it. Next up is Judith Stadler from Fitchburg. I strongly support resolution number R fifty-four twenty-one, as sponsored by Alder's Gearhart and Trader. Amending the twenty-twenty general fund and capital projects fund budgets, transfer twenty-twenty gasoline savings to hybrid electric vehicles capital projects. As stated in the rationale for the amendment, this fund enables the city to make hybrid electric vehicle purchases that may have a higher upfront cost. These vehicle purchases have the dual benefit, providing significant fuel savings over the life of the car and contributing toward Fitchburg's commitment to addressing climate change. As the city moves toward purchasing new police vehicles in the near future, this funding is especially important. The market for heavy-duty hybrid and electric vehicles, such as police vehicles, is expanding rapidly. And it'll be wonderful if the city can not just consider, but actually test drive such vehicles and possibly purchase a hybrid or electric police vehicle in the very near future. My children, four grandchildren, and I, thank you for helping achieve a livable planet. I think I said Schrader instead of Schroeder, sorry about that. And then last, from Rita Hendricks from Fitchburg. I see on the agenda a resolution to use twenty-twenty funds for gas to transfer those funds. Please consider putting those funds toward the, towards the increased costs we are likely to have this year since an older one of those funds reduced. All right, that's all I have for the public. Any comments? Tom, go ahead.
Actually, I just have a question for Misty. Misty, are you out there? In reference to the hybrid and electric vehicles for police department, where do we stand on that? I thought the jury on some of this was still out. I don't have any problem with the resolution. But where do our police department, where do we stand on this right now? Do you know?
Go ahead, Misty.
So the last vehicles that we purchased, I think in twenty twenty, there was some question about if the technology was there. But the next set of vehicles, I think, is in twenty twenty-two that we'll start to purchase. And there's hope that, you know, the technology will advance between now and then, and it'll be something that'll be viable. But Chad Breckland, or Chief Breckland, is very good about staying on top of that.
And I also believe that this resolution doesn't just limit it to police. This could be any vehicle that the city purchases. So there might be other departments that have needs that it makes a lot of sense for them to use a hybrid vehicle now.
As you all probably know, the, I'm kind of gonna have to follow this in years to come. Because these police vehicles are run at high speeds, they're run all the time, they're really tough on the car. But that's because of the job. And I'm interested to see if this hybrid or electric vehicles stand the, standard. I don't know if they will. I haven't talked to the sheriff, but does Dane County have any of these out there? That's for a sheriff question, that's for a police question. But the vehicles, and as the mayor said, used for other people in the city, absolutely. Why not? You know, it's a perfect idea. But keep in mind, the squad cars are a whole different tag, they're a whole different breed. The, they run at high speeds, they get in accidents, they are used to knock other cars off the road. It's not your basic car. It's a vehicle that's, the officer depends on every time he gets in it. So, I mean, it's a different, it's a different type of vehicle, that's all, but be interesting to see how it works out.
Gabriella?
Yeah, I actually, so Chief Breckland gave a little summary about his research on hybrid vehicles, but I believe it was to the finance committee and it wasn't to the general counsel. But my understanding is that he's been talking with Dane County Sheriff's Department, who has some of these hybrid vehicles, this new wave. And is talking to them about their experiences because they can, they can take a little bit more of a risk than we would want to take. But he thinks that they're in relatively good shape, but he wanted to wait for the next, next generation or the next year. So that there was a little bit of time to kind of figure out any sort of issues with it. But yeah, I, so far I've heard that that the results are good and there's potential for us to be purchasing same vehicle. Hybrid vehicle for the police department in the very near future. But I know Chief Breckland's done a lot of research, so if you're curious, Tom, I would encourage you to to give him a call. Because I think he can give you a pretty good summary of it.
Julia, go ahead.
Yeah, so I want to, I don't know, you have watch on TV, on the newspaper was the big announcement by Ford and GM. That they have pledged by, to produce more of the electrical vehicle by twenty thirty-five. So that one is a big announcement that the big, you know, car company here in the United States. Are thinking forward about, you know, manufacturing most of the fleet.
Um, you know, manufacturing most of the fleet, yeah, as electrical vehicle by Twenty Thirty-Five. So, I think this is a great opportunity for us, um, as a city to start thinking forward. About, um, and, you know, and we know that this technology is still more expensive than, you know. Than the, the fuel cars, so I think, uh, you know, uh, creating this fund. To, to start purchasing, um, this type of car is, um. It is aligned with our values as a city to become, you know, to continue be a green city. Uh, so I am gonna fully support this.
Uh, Randy?
Uh. Uh, this morning, I had a, a, a lengthy conversation with, with Misty, and then we also had the conversation on the Finance Committee. Um, and Misty, keep me honest here, uh. My concern was, because with the dollars were positive in the budget, uh. And were we boxing ourselves in by moving or transferring the money to the hybrid? Um, and I'm fully in support of the hybrid, and I'm in, fully in support of, of this resolution, I just wanna put. Uh, the, the residents of Fitchburg at, their minds at ease for those that have concerns about. The money not going to a contingency reserve if prices for gasoline skyrocket, and then what do we do? Uh, this money, once it's in the hybrid funds, can also be transferred back out, so. Um, and hopefully I said that correctly, Misty, that, uh, we're not boxing ourselves in, so. I'm in favor of the, uh, resolution.
All right, uh, Joe, go ahead.
I'm in favor of it as well, um, you know, I, I think it's an investment. It's a good investment, it's not only an investment in, uh, fi- you know, financial investment, but it's an investment in the environment, so. Uh, I'll just keep my comments short and sweet that, you know, this is a no-brainer, and I, I think, uh, all of my council should support it.
Uh, Sarah, go ahead.
And I'll just say as well, that I obviously, I really appreciate Gabriella's language in the, within this, that I do think it's just. Really positive for the environment, and I love the comments from the residents just saying as to how forward-thinking this is. And how it is just really thinking of the future for our community, so. Really excited by it.
Anyone else? All right, then let's go to a vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 And anyone opposed, say nay. All right, that is approved. All right, uh, to announcements tomorrow night, is gonna be the whole, Julia, anything you wanna say about that?
Uh, no, um, the agenda is already posted, so, on the website, so. So, oh, we, we have three presentations tomorrow, so be patient, okay?
All right, and then otherwise, uh, two weeks from now is our next meeting, is there a motion to adjourn? Moved by Tom. It's sent by Joe, I think, all in favor of adjourned, say aye.
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 And opposed nay. All right, thanks, everyone.